You can't hold it down, Jim.
Yeah, we can actually. Oh, yeah, yeah, we can. Hold on. Let me get plugged in here. Okay, we're good.
All right.
All right, good evening, everybody. It's 4:30 PM. This is July 29th. We're on the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. This is a work session tonight, so for extra conversation, we will invite you. Otherwise, we appreciate your patience with us tonight and a low to those of you there at home. We will have Mayor's Award starting off. Second, number two, is a public hearing in consideration of the sale of a portion of property located south of the property located locally known as 1220 Mount Pleasant Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, Mr. Teslin.
This is somewhat excess land adjacent to Mount Pleasant Street, Mount Pleasant Street Bridge that Robert's Tire has been using and kind of through the bridge project have realized it has been owned by the city. Looking to sell this land to Robert's Tire, who owns the property to the north. It's .21 acres. There is a sewer easement over the majority of the property, so there's not much value in being able to build on the property, but they do use it for storage and is valuable to them in that sense. But is, again, adjacent to Mount Pleasant Street just south of their property and would go to Robert's Tire and be combined with Lotto North with transfer by Quikly indeed for $750.
Counsel, you guys good with that?
Good with that.
Yes.
I'm groovy with it. Number three is a resolution awarding bid for the 2019 Dankworth Park Pool Improvement Project. Who's coming first? Mr. Teslin?
So we got bids for this project on July 23rd. Received three bids for the project. $511,167 was the low bid by By Street Contracting from West Burlington. This is making improvements to the pool property, which is owned by the city for year-round use of the pool by leasing, which the city currently has leased with most LLC to operate the pool in the city's offseason. They would put up the dome after the end of the city's summer season and then operate it privately through most LLC. They'd be responsible for staffing, paying utilities and operating the pool during that time. Looking to start the project August 26th, the day after the city's last days, August 25th, with completion in November 2019. I guess a couple of questions. The city will continue to operate it in the summer without the dome. It will be an open-air swimming as it normally has throughout the summer, but would have the ability to put up dome in the winter season. Some of the improvements to the pool include a new pool deck, some drainage fencing, improvements to the pool house to condition it for year-round use. It's a block building without any conditioning currently or insulation, so that covers a lot of it. And then there are kind of external or secondary features, adding a storage shed for storage of the dome and different units associated with their pool and adding air handling units. The actual bubble is a separate purchase that is owned by the swim club, so this is just improvements to the actual pool house or pool property. This will be run through the city as a city project since it's an improvement to our facility, but it is paid for by the swim club. Did confirm with US Bank, they do have funds available for the project and the amount of the project plus a 10% contingency. The city would request funds through the swim club as a loan from US Bank for payment of the project. So the city does not have any funds budgeted for the project. Any unexpected or unknown items will need to be covered by the swim club and the contingency fund. That would Department of Public Health is required to approve the project as well. Plans have been set for them and awaiting approval. This approval would be needed prior to entering in the contract and starting work on the project. One item at the end of the memo that we've talked about previously is the pool heater. Have had issues throughout the season on that and would recommend that some replacement of that heater before operating in the winter. Just concern over failing during the winter is a little different than during the summer. We do not necessarily need the pool heater during the summer. There's a lot of pools that don't operate with a heater, but it is absolutely critical for year-round use of the pool. But that's something that we'll have to have further discussion on, but it is approximately $30,000 in cost for that replacement.
What was our discussion on that ahead of time? Was that a... Were we doing a pro-rata share on those items or how is that written in the contract?
In the lease agreement, it just says any item over $10,000 needs to have discussion with the leasing. I guess swim club would be associated with that and figured out how to proceed with that. I think there was discussion whether it is a 50-50 split or based on use or kind of as a case-by-case basis on the item. But just in the lease, it says that a discussion has to occur for anything over $10,000 cost between the leasing and the city on how to proceed with that. So we've started, they're aware of it, started some discussions with swim club and so that they're aware and will have to proceed in some manner prior to operation of the pool in November. If you guys have any comments or...
It's not perfect, but I'm satisfied. As long as we can keep Mr. Freeland out of negotiations, I won't deal with him, but...
Where did we stand with bank backing on this?
I did confirm with Woodstorch Summit US Bank that they do have funds available for the $511,000 and a 10% contingency on hand for that and did receive a confirmation email from them.
We good?
So, well, so when this pool heater issue, when are we going to talk about it?
Do you guys have any thoughts or input on that?
Because it would seem to me we need to address that now.
Tonight or...
Huh?
Like tonight?
No, I just, we need to talk about it. We're going to go accept this, which seems to me like it's the right thing to do. But I don't want to head into the winter with, you know, done all the work for the pool and then we don't have a pool heater.
What do you want, John?
Well, I mean, are we, we need to, I think we need to put this, where do we get the funds for it?
I guess it depends on how this gets split up. We don't know, I mean, we've got our bids, but of course, things change as the project goes on. So I guess we'd feel more comfortable talking about contributing to that if we knew what our final costs were for the construction project itself. But if things, I don't think we're saying we will or will not contribute to it, but...
We did, we did when we set up that lease. The lease is front-loaded going back to you guys so that to help cover that. Now, it's not going to be there before.
That's what I thought, I recall.
Yeah, everything was coming to you first up to, I think it was 15,000, the first 15,000?
Is more than that.
Is it?
Back at that, yeah.
It's something along those lines, but that all came to you first before we started getting our portion. Now, that's not going to be there before the first winter, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that's going to have to be juggled there some, but...
But it's very possible that we would have some contribute towards that.
Okay.
We just don't know how much, if all those things yet.
So I know that the bank has backed the 500-some thousand that we have for this portion. Where are you at for the overall cost of the project? I think you're a little over 800,000?
Yeah, we're...
Yeah, we're, actually, I just, I just looked at it.
We're close enough that the bank is comfortable with what we're doing.
The bank's comfortable with it. I have, yeah, we're...
We're ready to, we're ready to order the bubble, but we don't want to do that until we have council approval for the project, so.
Are you, would it be safe to say that you're...
The other thing is we really don't know the cost on the heater yet. I don't think, I don't think anybody's nailed down the actual cost yet.
For the replacement of the same, I just talked to Brad before the meeting, was around 30,000. He felt comfortable for a repeater system. It was 60,000 to 80,000, which we would not...
For the multiple heater, it was. I was going to say he was looking into a multiple heater, so.
Need that for our operation if you guys wanted it, but that's a...
It'd have to be a lot more efficient to even consider that.
You're, I think, my understanding was you have, you're in a position to be able to move forward with all components of this, but it's, you are tight with where your financing is currently.
We are, we are.
We're continuing to fund, as you see.
So I think that is, to your point, we need, I under, there is some level of how are you going to address an issue that's another piece of funding that's above and beyond that? And how would that be split and what, that is something that's worthwhile needing to talk through.
Yeah, we just need to nail that down, I think.
And it may not be that you get it done with this, with this one, but...
At this point, okay. All right.
You satisfied, John?
Yeah.
And PT?
Great.
Thanks for the work.
Gentlemen. Number four is a resolution awarding contract for the 2019 Seal Coat Street Resurfacing Project. Mr. McGregor.
Good evening. We did some bid openings last Tuesday, of which the Seal Coat was one. This Seal Coat project includes major portions of Luiz and Denmark. There's some smaller sections of other roadways. The estimate was 295,000. We had a low bid from Pro Paving at 274,471. This is the first time we've worked with this contractor on this project, so we, everything checks out, so we are, we recommend approval of this contract with Pro Paving.
Guys, we good?
Sounds good.
Road use tax to fund it, so.
Okay.
Number five is a resolution awarding contract for the 2019 HMA Street Resurfacing Project.
This was one of the other ones that we opened up last week. The HMA project was estimated at 697,000 and includes several different streets in the North Hill area, 7th, 8th, North Street, Franklin. And then there's a portion of Agency Street between Shields and Curran, the furthest south bound, or furthest south lane eastbound. It's a pretty rough shape, so we would take some of that section out. The low bidder was WL Miller at $731,000. The funding for this is GO, general obligation loan money. We, the other project that comes out of this source is the Aspen and Dill Project. We originally had the Harrison Street Project in there, but kind of re-shifted things around for available monies. The WL Miller looks to get this done yet this fall. I think that's probably was our concern, just the duration of what the project would take. The project should go a little bit quicker with the ADA not included in this fall's work, but something that we would look at doing next spring. So it would just be a, you know, kind of a mill and fill type project with none of the ADA. So we would recommend moving forwards a little over kind of our estimate, but you can see that we had three competitors there and it's kind of the nature of this work. We, our asphalt prices always shift. We don't do a ton of it, so it's kind of a guessing game on estimating.
Guys?
Good.
Good.
Yeah, it's not that far over. It is over, but it's not that far.
And you still have money in the fund according to note, right? Okay.
Okay. Number six is a resolution awarding contract for the 2019 ADA Improvement.
This was one of the last ones that we did last week. This project has kind of been one that we've tossed around. Just been a difficult one to do. Not a lot of people were interested in it early on. We didn't receive any bids, as you remember. I think we did this back in late May or early June. Then we took it and we pared it down and we went out and quoted, but the quoting pricing was more than we were allowed to per state code. So we put the project back together and put it out to bid. We had one bidder in the amount of $153,000. The engineer's estimate was $87,000. After talking with Jesse, we looked at the bid tab. The biggest thing that we noticed was, I don't want to say outlined, but way higher than we expected was the traffic control. There was a push-button, solar-powered push-button crossing, and that is for 49,500. After talking with Jesse, we think that maybe we could take that out, award contract for the full amount and then do a deduction to reduce that out of the installation of that project. The bigger reason why this project needs to be completed is the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge for sidewalk work and ADA compliance. Rather than put it with the bridge work, which would have required prevailing wages to be affected, which has affected, you know, the Locust Street Project and the other Mount Pleasant Street work, you know, 15% to 20% on some of the work. So we decided then to try and pair this out and do it as a separate project, so it is necessary to complete it per the DOT. They'd like to have it done by the time that the bridge project is closed out. I don't know when that will happen specifically, but I would like to keep this on the agenda and talk more with Jesse here in the next couple of days on whether... The bid is quite a bit higher than what we had planned, but I think that that traffic control part coming out is a huge, would affect that greatly. I don't know that it's necessary, but that brings it down closer to 100, it's at 103,000 with some change. So not that much more than what he had estimated, but you're taking a pretty good chunk of what was probably a part of his original estimate out of that, so.
I still wonder about the ability to just change your scope and do a project next spring, award over the winter and maybe get a little bit more interest in it. I don't, but I don't, I know you have to offset that with what you need to do for DOT.
I think that's my biggest concern is the DOT gets fussy with not getting this sidewalk work done in the timeframe that the bridge project has happened.
This contractor is not going to have a problem to take that solar unit out, you don't think?
No, I think that was part of the reason why the price was so high is just because it's kind of a pain to deal with.
Okay.
So I don't, I do agree, Jim, that, you know, if we were to do the ADA project, we could change the scope and add it on to the asphalt project ADA work that we're not going to do this fall. And pair them out and bid them over the winter and get that to start next spring. I think that's a possibility. But let me, let me talk with Jim about it, or Jim, Jesse about it and give you kind of a recommendation next week.
You guys good?
I'm good.
Number seven is a res... What's that?
Nothing.
No, you started it, finish it.
No, I said, "Still you," while you were reading. I was waiting for you.
All right, still I. Resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Front Street Hawkeye Art Sewer Repair Project. Mr. McGregor.
This project actually did not let last Tuesday. It'll let tomorrow. We, we had some pre-bid meetings that were contingent upon for contractors so they could actually bid on the project. At that, we, we heard that they wanted a little extra time to take a look at the project. I want to get the project bid and under contract so we don't miss a window this fall if we have a potentially low river level. But as you remember, the big change with this project was the sheet pile wall and then kind of the way it was bid versus a, you know, a unit price versus lump sum. So it'll bid tomorrow. I'll have this, I'll have that information for you in the packet and then I will talk about it next week.
Okay.
We good?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to the proposed consent. Number one is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Good. Number two is a resolution approving refund of beer license for Casey's Marketing Company doing business as Casey's General Store, number 2342. Good. Number three, resolution approving refund of beer license for Casey's Marketing Company doing business as Casey's General Store, number 2346. Good. Number four is resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, release of retention monies for the 2018 Agency Street Water Project East End. Mr. McGregor.
The Agency project east of Roosevelt is completed and we're going through the motions here with this resolution to close out the project. It was bid out at 1.93 million. There were some change orders in there for 107,000, quantity deduction of 4,000. Bring in the total as-built costs of the roadway. There is some inspection and engineering costs that aren't shown here. We actually hired this project out from Vintor and Kim. They did the inspection work on us. There was some internal monitoring on it, so I want, I'm going to update this for you before next week to show you kind of the true costs, what this overall project really truly costs us. It'll be, it'll be a little bit larger than that. This project was funded, though, from a T-SIP or a Traffic Safety Improvement Grant for $500,000 to update the traffic lights there. The rest is funded through tax increment finance. I think we're using some GO funds that were left over in the account from the previous year along with that.
We have Agency Street East, West, Mount Pleasant Street Bridge and Central Street Overpass work are all, are four different accounts that were funded with TIF funds. And as we close out those projects, we'll, where there's any surplus, because a couple of them came in a little under, we'll use those to offset some of the shortfalls in the others. This is notably one that has a little bit of a shortfall. I think Central Street Overpass also had a shortfall on it. Whatever doesn't get covered out of that is either, will either be in road use tax or out of your, your large borrowing that you do for your main overlay projects. And we can do either way, but kind of need to see where we close out at the end of it as we juggle the TIF funds around between those, those accounts that we'd funded with that piece. We need closeout on all four of them to know where our final shortfall amount's going to be, but there will be one.
This is, this is three of four, though. The bridge will be the last remaining.
Yep.
Unfortunately, that one may take a minute.
It's going to take a little bit.
There may be some legal actions that are pending on that, so that one may be a while until that one gets finally closed out.
Yeah.
Good? Thank you, sir. Number five is resolution approving 28E agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Henderson County, Illinois for ambulance service to portions of Henderson County, Illinois. Chief.
All right, this is a brand-new agreement. I talked about maybe a month ago that I was going to Henderson County with this agreement, so again, just to go over kind of how we do ambulance service over in Illinois. We primarily do ALS tiers or advanced life support where they have a basic life support ambulance. They call us. We meet up on the side of the road. We hop in the back of their ambulance, continue on to wherever, whatever hospital, and we bill the ambulance service for that $300. That's fairly typical across the state, somewhere in that range. What this agreement is for is the, the other calls where we're the primary service. Or about half of those times we get called over there as the primary service, we actually get disregarded. However, we get disregarded when we're almost to a Quaca or Stronghurst or somewhere. So it's quite a time commitment where we're just turning around, coming back, and there's no revenue. So this, that's what this agreement's for. It's set at $4 per capita where the CTAA was at, starting at five, then goes to six and seven at the top. So we just took the top and went just a little more than 50% of that because we're not promising to be their primary service. We're in here on the agreement and number one, it says we're agreeing to be their secondary service. So they page out the primary or responsible ambulance service. If they don't get a response, then they page BFD to go over and take those calls. So we're just there to make sure somebody is responding to these calls in a timely manner. This agreement will, at $4 per capita, is somewhere around 28,000 a year is what they'll pay us for that service. And then every time we do transport a patient in our ambulance, we also bill the patient, so. We do, when we get, when we go over there, actually treat and transport a patient, we do get reimbursed a pretty good rate for those calls, but, so that's about half of the calls. Just a little, I looked, last year we took 261 calls in Henderson County. The year to date, we're at 154 calls in Henderson County. So somewhere in that same, should end up at the same amount.
You guys good?
They've already voted and approved the...
Okay.
Good job.
Could you, while you're there, ground emergency medical transport, that's a big piece of funding in the general fund that hasn't been there before for this new fiscal year. Kind of where does that stand or do you know?
Every indication is that it started July 1st, is we're going to be able to go back to July 1st and collect a little more, have a little better reimbursement for Medicaid patients. However, all the, the final paperwork's not been done by the state, so we're not able to submit for the higher claim amounts. Right now, we, we get about $120 for a Medicaid patient. And we're running around 20% of our calls are Medicaid patients, so 120 versus a, say, Blue Cross in the $600 to $700 range. So we're losing quite, losing, we're, we don't get reimbursed at that same rate. GEMT will at least even up that amount. It'll make up the difference there, so.
That can be huge.
Could be, yeah.
Well, depending on what happens with that, that's a huge swing in what our, how we do for budget this year. We put in 250,000 as anticipated revenues. If that doesn't get implemented and started, we have a major shortfall in this budget. However, if it gets implemented and they reimburse back to beginning July 1, we may have actually a little bit more revenue than what we have budgeted. It's just, it's, that's a major unknown in this budget, how this proceeds. Everything looks on, on pace to be okay, but when it doesn't start when it's supposed to, you don't know exactly where it does end up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Number six is resolution approving professional services agreement, services agreement with HR Green, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for general consulting services for the Burlington, Iowa wastewater treatment facility for the period of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. Don.
It's pretty much covered in the memo that I put together. It's a renewal basically of an annual agreement that allows us to contact HR Green and ask some questions about this process or that process or how we go about doing something and seeking professional replies to those questions that we have. And they're very familiar with our facility. They've been working with us for a lot of years. And so we think that the familiarity and the working relationship that we've developed over the years is beneficial to us when we seek information or replies to questions that we have.
Questions?
Sounds good to me. It's in the budget, right?
Yes, sir.
And you've used them before, so let's go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Number seven is a resolution approving amendment between CWA Local 7176 and City of Burlington. Chief.
Good evening. This is an agreement for the evidence specialist position in our department. It's a part-time position, 28 hours a week. This conversation came about when we found in need of hiring an evidence specialist. And we found the previous person that we had hired didn't quite meet the standards that we needed. So we did some background with other municipal agencies here in the state of Iowa that are about the same size, comparable to us. And we found our, our rate of pay was a little bit too low, quite a bit low, in order to employ somebody that's going to meet those qualifications and do that kind of work that we're expecting of them. It's quite detailed when you talk about evidence coming into the department, property coming in, and then maintaining that property and then disposition of it. And we're talking about not just tangible property, but digital property when we're talking about video and audio. And we received quite a bit of it. And the need for expertise in that area is, is, I guess, something that it's difficult for us to find, that kind of expertise and somebody to meet those qualifications. Initially, I started talking with Jim about maybe moving that to a full-time position. A lot of agencies that are comparable to us do have it as full-time with benefits. And definitely, there's some times when that person is definitely working that 28 hours a week from start to finish to try to fulfill all the obligations that we expect in the evidence room and handling of that property. Along with that, we have, at times, we seize currency in regards to investigations that may be obtained illegally and asked for forfeitures in there. And that process becomes lengthy and the legal, the legality of it is quite difficult to manipulate or I guess to go through when it comes to the court system and the county attorney's office and where that property goes and how it's taken care of. There's a lot of legal matters and law that's with that that needs to be understood by this person. So the long and short of it is the evidence property specialist. We decided that this is more of a budget issue down the road, the full-time versus part-time. So it's still staying at a part-time position, 28 hours a week. And we're going to try and entice someone with a few more qualifications to come in at this price range, which we had done our due diligence and answering the questions exactly what they do and what their responsibilities are and the job. And Stephanie had put it through that process and found out the comparable rate is right around what's proposed in this to the union. I talked to the union, our union rep for the department, the union and the Bonnie with the CWA that works with them. And she's signed off on that. I don't know if your copy shows that on there, but I do have a copy of her signing that agreement. So everything's done besides the resolution through the council to approve that for the next two years. And then they'll renegotiate that when the contract is up in 2019. And then they'll renegotiate that uh when the contract is up in twenty-twenty for the year twenty-one.
So the figures that you have in here, uh the, the new numbers are for uh effective July one nineteen and then for twenty?
Yes.
Do the, where, how do those compare to the animal control officer?
Uh, they're just, with the animal control officer, I believe they're just a little bit under what the animal control officer makes uh starting out and their wage. So I think it's, I think the animal control officer starts out at twenty-one or, or something like that, I believe.
So it's pretty close?
It's pretty close, just a little lower.
And we, we ran it through, he mentioned Stephanie looking at it, not only comparing to other cities for uh similar job positions. But also within our uh, within the non-union structure and trying to look at, based off of job responsibilities where it fit. And this pay range would match pretty, pretty comparably with where it would fit on a, within our non-union schedule as well.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions for the chief?
Nope.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a public hearing set for August nineteenth. Uh A is consideration of an application for multifamily rental unit production, uh new construction program. Oh, thank you. Round six for the Tama building site for the Iowa Economic Development Authority, Community Development Block Grant Program. And then uh B is consideration of a lease agreement with the Des Moines County Historical Society for the Hawkeye Log Cabin in Crepo Park. So we'll be talking about that here real soon. Uh discussion items tonight, uh treasurer's report. Annette?
So the treasurer's report that's in the packet is very preliminary. There is a lot of things that are gonna change. So I don't know how much you guys want to talk about it because we're gonna be accruing stuff back through August. In this one, our transfers haven't been made yet. So it's just kind of more cash basis right now what's happened on here. And we'll be accruing everything back. So again, and Jim hit on some of the projects that we're gonna be doing transfers between to get, to clean some of those up.
Yeah, some of the, some of the accounts, as an example, like Employee Benefits Fund shows a one-point-one-million-dollar balance. That all gets transferred over to the general fund, which is sitting at a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. So you, we have some major transfers that happen that haven't been reflected in here. Some of them are already gone through our system, but.
Like today, I looked at general fund. As of today, we have two-point-six million in there in cash, which you can't see that on here. But there's also gonna be expenditures that, because we're still doing accounts payable back towards that. So I mean, this is very preliminary.
Yeah, let's wait till we got some hard times, but you guys satisfied with preliminary numbers?
Sure.
Yeah, outside of the fact that all those transfers haven't happened.
Correct.
We don't see any that are majorly out of line?
No, I mean, like a big question, ours was our flood things. And we know now we're getting insurance and all that stuff, so I mean, all that stuff's gonna be coming through. And some of it, some of it'll go back to this last year, but some of it'll go forward because we'll be doing the repairs then. So again, like vehicle maintenance probably, all of our internal service funds, they've all got a little ways to go. Because we're always a month behind timing-wise. Same with all my grants. I've went through and asked for reimbursements. And you'll see those come through when we do our accounts receivable entry and put money back as we get it in. So, but there's nothing that's really out, I mean, that I've noticed so far that seems unusual or out of line with what we think's going to happen.
Well, as we move forward, if you see uh, if you see any boils or uh something like that, make sure you let us know. We wanna know.
Yeah, so you're gonna see the same treasurer's report change for the next few months.
Right on.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Annette.
Thank you.
Thanks, Annette.
Uh number two is a presentation, Annual Report of Tree Advisory Board, Scott Zeiser. Come on down. And the crew.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Scott Zeiser, um from the Tree Advisory Council. We have some other members here. And Patrick is going to display one of the items I'm gonna talk about. So some of the events in the past year, we obviously hold our four quarterly meetings. We worked on creating an educational training seminar for our licensed tree um contractors this year. And the topic was proper pruning. Um changes to the ordinance and to the tree license contract is what we're working on too. We hosted uh two planting demonstrations, planted over a hundred trees in the city right-ofways. These plantings will assist in the funding of the Trees Forever grant and partnership of, of the Alliant Energy. Uh we did start a wood utilization program, which is being promoted by US Forestry Services, then the Iowa DNR. Um we are one of, Burlington is one of five communities in the state um testing this pro- program. The program helps eliminate some of the lumber that would be dropped off in the landfill and less, and then consumed. And then cut up into firewood and used by furniture for um people that would need something like that. So our arbor jet system is going to treat all the remaining ash trees. Um we are working on goals to establish educational programs with our new outdoor classroom signs, which is a sample right here. And uh we had three people attend the Tree City USA lunch and receive the thirty-one-year Tree USA sticker. There were Patrick, Robert Walker, and Ryan Gorley. So that is briefly what we did in the past year. If you have any questions, I can answer. We have Patrick, our city forester, can answer. Or we have our other members. So.
What is a tree water jet and what's the science behind that?
The science? To interject in the cambium layer, basically, am I, am I correct? Is to, so systemically or systemic is root, but this is in the system, the bark itself, so it goes up into the system. So it wards off the emerald ash bor is what basically it does. So it attacks it, it poisons it, or doesn't like it. Basically, it's sending chemical into the tree, so.
Any idea how many unaffected ash trees we have in our community?
Uh probably zero. Zero. I, you may have a couple that are sending wild growths up at the trunk or halfway up the tree. But they're not a sustainable tree anymore, so they need to be cut down. It's a, it's a bad deal is what it is, yes. Alright.
I think we're good.
Alright, thank you.
Hey, Patrick, you're a rock star, my friend. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
It's a root pool of rock stars, really.
Well said. Number three, downtown parking. Nice. Right, right. Walkers causing trouble at the, at the eye. Downtown parking.
So we have a memo in the packet. Uh our parking committee met uh last week and discussed the possible change from four-to-three-hour parking. Uh evaluated uh the parking study and uh had some discussions. Uh within the um memo in the packet, uh the committee did not recommend the change to four-to-three at this time, uh based on some factors. One being uh parking has not aggressively been promoted to date. Uh we have created a parking brochure that's also in the packet, um but uh that's just been created in the last few weeks and has not been distributed. We're waiting, I guess, to see if a change was gonna be made or not, um before we put that out, so that the current information would be out on that. Um but show a copy. Just talking about the parking lots available, um better describing the signs that have been put up in the last year. To make downtown businesses and residents a little more aware of what the parking options are, what the costs are, um fines. And then having a parking map that would direct individuals to the parking lots and then delineate what the two-hour on Jefferson, the dark blue. And then whether it's the three-hour currently in the lighter blue. And then the gray being uh no time limit parking. So that hasn't, that'd be something that uh could be distributed uh here shortly. Just wanted to see if there's any changes before we move forward. Um and try and get that in that, to every downtown business and uh apartment building so that all individuals had copies of it. And could really move forward with promoting and being more aware of what the parking options are downtown. Other discussions where parking ticketing has not changed substantially when the, from when the previous change was made. From uh two-and-three-hour parking on side streets to four-hour parking. Uh so we're going back to that three-hour uh as one uh concern, whether that would really change the habits or not. Parking lot, public parking lot spaces remain open and available for use and lease. Currently, uh forty-eight, we have a forty-eight percent lease rate. A hundred-and-forty-three spaces are leased out of three-hundred available uh public spaces downtown. Uh so uh that'd be another reason for this brochure, trying to promote uh leased parking. Are looking to do, update the parking usage study. When we adopted our, uh we're in the process of creating the parking study. We uh did a snapshot view of uh what's the actual usage rate of all the parking spaces downtown. How often do they turn over? How often are they empty? And looking to do that here again in the next few weeks uh through the use of a drone and uh trying to map that with uh the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission. Uh to really determine how many spaces are open throughout the day at different hours of the day. Did look at other communities and examining parking fines may have a greater impact on parking and lead to more parking, public parking lot usage. Uh whether that's an increased or graduated fine system for repeat violators. Uh also looked at, some communities have a first offense waiver for visitors from out of town, so you're not discouraging those people that are new to the community. Their first time downtown may not be familiar, um but letting them know what the requirements are. Recent flooding has had an impact on parking. We've had a major impact on parking downtown. It was a short-term impact, although it didn't seem like it was short-term while we're in it. But um some of those short-term issues can be addressed in different manners. We have upcoming, upcoming flood wall work uh to stabilize much of the riverfront parking needs during flood times. Did also talk about whether uh to consider floodtime parking policies such that non-lease spaces and public parking lots are free during uh those periods of flooding. That uh displace people from the riverfront. Jefferson would remain uh two-hour, I guess, under the current uh assumption, uh so it wouldn't change Jefferson. And then we do have quite a bit of upcoming work with the Tiger Grant on Main and Jefferson and then Washington Street, along with some planned new developments. Fifth and Valley at the Blaw Building, uh and the Tama Building, that will have impacts on parking in downtown. That could affect changes or lead to new thoughts as well. So based on a lot of uh factors, that was the general consensus of the parking committee is to um maybe try and promote parking a little bit more. And in a different manner than uh making a change from four-to-three-hour at the, at this time, although uh it might be something to consider more in the future. But if it were to be changed, if council did want to move forward with it, just uh for the information, there's approximately a hundred-and-twenty signs that would need to be updated. Most could utilize a new uh sticker over the four, going to the three, um while some would need to be completely updated. From public work standpoint, it'd be approximately sixty to eighty hours of labor. Um and it would probably be around November that that could be implemented unless it was set as a higher priority or over some of their other work. With the flood work and other projects that they're behind on, that uh that's the timeframe that, if it were approved, that that probably could be implemented.
Council.
How do, how do we indicate to the public when the blue and orange, the, the daily lease spots are open for lease? Is there, I mean, we don't have anything on, on the, the sign itself, right, that says this is available for lease, do they?
Each individual space has a blue or orange tag on it.
But how does it say whether it's leased or not? So someone driving through the parking lot?
If it's, if it has a blue or orange, it is leased.
It is leased.
Yeah.
Okay, so if it doesn't have it, then it's.
Doesn't have it, if it's green, then it's out, open hourly parking.
But if it's a blue or orange one, it's leased and so if somebody wants to lease one, then you change it from blue to orange?
Someone wants and, and I, we could change it from blue to orange or, or go from green to blue or we could change it around. We try and keep them grouped together, but what the color it is, is what it, its current use is.
I just didn't know how we were indicating that to people.
Yeah.
Like when they drive through the parking lot, they, they live downtown or they have a business, why I'd really like to have that spot. They can approach the city and convert one of those from green to blue and orange.
They could convert a green to a reserved one. Current, blue or orange one is currently leased, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they can convert it.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing is there's, is there any way to promote that on our website? How many open spots we have?
Yeah, we started to update our website with this brochure. On the brochure, uh I guess if you go to BurlingtonIowa.org and search downtown parking, we have a specific webpage. Um with, that's one goal of the committee is to get more information on that, including this brochure. And then uh Annette has, we have a count of actual leased and open spaces in each lot. And if they want to lease a space in that lot, they can contact Annette to do so.
One, one of the issues that, and, and, sorry, Matt. Just to get on with what John's asking about, uh one of the issues that we probably have for getting what, the kind of information out in a timely manner that you would like. Our reservation system right now is an Excel spreadsheet for, uh that Annette uses to track all the different spots that are, that are used. We don't have a, a nice, we don't have a software system that's set up that can, that we could plug in the, the lots.
Lots and spots.
And, and then you could track what's open and available that way. And I think you guys have done some looks at some different software programs that are out there. Uh I don't know where they fit within the flexibility to do some of those things, but what kind of cost are you looking at to?
It, well, it's varied from depending a few thousand dollars annually to ten, twelve thousand dollars for new software.
And you're probably more in that ten thousand annual range to do what you're asking for.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying though, suffice to say that if it's a city-owned lot, the spot is available for lease.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
So I mean, we, if, if you wanted to lease that spot, you can come to the city, say headlight, go and lease it.
Yeah, ideal situation would be that we would have a, have something on, that was, that was a little bit more up-to-date on, that you could link onto. And, and, and see where, where would spots be available, how many might be available to do.
There's probably ways that we could do that without, I mean, as far as looking at the pictures of my lots. I mean, I put it where like on a Google Doc where probably people can see them. The only problem with that is, is I like, so you guys want me to cut?
Yes, please.
So when we, we did all the parking lots, I grouped all the leased spots together by time. So twenty-four-sevens are together in a lot, seven-thirty to fives, Monday through Friday are the lot, and all the open ones are together. So that when you drive into a lot, you can actually go down a row and say, everything on this right-hand side is daily or hourly. So the only problem with putting it out there for the whole, for everybody to see, which is not a big deal, is they're gonna pick spots right smack in the middle. And we're gonna say, nope, I don't want to do that because I want to keep them grouped together as much as possible.
But it would be within the lot itself.
It would be within the lot itself because people call me now and I'll say, do you, are you looking for twenty-four-seven or seven-thirty to five? And then I'll say, these are the spaces I have available. You can check them out, get back to me, or I can just pick one and assign it to you. And that's the way I do it now, so I can keep, because my idea was, when you drive into a lot, if you're hourly looking for a spot, they should be all together. Make it easy for somebody coming in to find a spot.
And it's not like the lots themselves are ginormous where you have to, you know, you're picking the spot over here because it's closer.
Right.
It's gonna be one, two, maybe three aisles over.
A good example is the lower ramp. When you come in off of Main Street, on the right-hand side, there's like twelve spots, I think, that are hourly or daily. And as you come in, and then when you exit out, when you get towards Main Street, there's another block of, I don't know, there's ten there or twelve there. That are all hourly also. So, because you know, in the wintertime, people are looking for covered spots. I mean, it's great if somebody wants to lease all of them and they're all leased all the time.
Right.
But for my purposes, I try to keep them all together, and that's what I do in every lot right now. Because I think that's better for.
No, that's groovy.
The people driving through them.
What were you gonna say?
So. I, I think we've just. Done a terrible job of managing this whole situation the last couple of years. I think we've made it extremely complicated. I think any person that comes into any community is not likely to get on our website and check our parking policies prior to doing so. Nobody, unless you have consistently worked on the parking policy or work or live downtown and have read the handbook. Uh is gonna be a hundred percent familiar with how this operation works. I think we, we just, simpler is better. I don't want people to have to pay for parking that want to shop downtown, so we need to have a large contingent of our street parking that's free. I called a dozen or emailed a dozen different uh business owners that I know downtown, um that work downtown every day. Every single one of them said that they would rather have a three-hour parking versus a two or a four. And um I think there's a better way to go about doing this versus having uh green spots and blue spots and orange spots. So that when somebody pulls into a parking lot, they know whether or not they can park there or not, so. It, if you, if you look at other parking organizations, um I would prefer it be where we sell a tag, put it in the window of the car. The person driving by can see it. They don't have to get out and check license plates. And then that, that sticker, that, you know, if, if we, if somebody wants to buy a twenty-four-seven tag, then they can buy it. And then the person checking tags will just know that that orange tag means that that car can be there twenty-four-seven. Uh if it's a blue tag, then it's. If it's a blue tag, then it's only allowed to be in the parking lot and get away from designated parking spaces and just go with a parking lot designation. So, if you want to, if you want to, if you want to buy a tag to be able to park in a lot and not have to worry about moving your car every three hours, just sell them a blue tag and that blue tag says that they have to park in that parking lot. So, when parking meter lady pulls in, she just drives through.
She does not currently go through the lots that have, I mean, the leased spaces, she does not monitor those. That is up to whoever's leasing it. So, if somebody parks in your space, it's your, you can have them towed, or you can leave them a nice little note telling them that you're letting them go by this time. But she doesn't monitor those spots right now.
No, I, I understand. I, I still think we've just made it extremely complicated. And anybody that doesn't regularly come to downtown, if they're going to try and pull into a lot, is likely to, to probably do something that they're not supposed to just because they don't understand the rules, the regulations, or when or where they're supposed to park. So, that's my, my two cents. As far as what we do, we, we just did these signs. I think we should be committed to those signs until the Tiger process has worked its way through and we determine what we're going to do to the parking lots in the immediate future. I'd like to see us adjust the side streets and Jefferson Street to three-hour parking and, and leave it at that.
I was, I had a quick question. On the reserved spots, it has the number and then this color-coded, does the color-coded part have what it is as well? I thought it did, yeah.
Yeah, I think it does.
So, all you have to do is look at the tag and it'll say, if this is, it's orange color and it's reserved twenty-four-seven. I don't consider myself...
The sign, I mean, that was the whole idea of putting these big signs up was to try to explain to them before they went in the parking lot, look for these places.
And the signs are, those lots are really for the residents and employees of downtown. So, you know, the, the problem is always going to be human nature, right? Human nature is, I'm going to park right in front of whether I work there or shop there. I dealt with that for thirty-five years. I tried to pay my guys extra money to park a block away and they wouldn't. And you see it all the time where employees are parking right in front of the business they work at. So, and that's human nature. But the lots are really designed for employees and overnight residents versus out-of-town shoppers.
Right.
Because that's why we have the limits that we do.
And I think that's one of the nice things about the twenty-four-seven and having designated spots is people that live downtown, they want to know, I'm going to be able to pull in this lot, this is my spot. And no matter if I come or go, whenever I come and go, that spot's always going to be there. So, where if you go to a tag system and they got to drive around and look for a spot, that's more difficult for them. And they're living down here. I mean, they're, I guess that's my thing.
That's...
Because once there was a, there was a conversation about making all the lots like that, and I don't know about anybody else, but if I lived in one of the buildings, I wouldn't want to park three parking lots away if I went to the grocery store or, you know, shopping and have to carry my stuff all that far when I'm paying to park.
I just, I don't think it's a perfect system, but when you don't have money just to throw around and you've already got a system in place, you just can't go around overhaul and stuff. So, it's, it's just trying to work and whittle away, and I, I, I think we should continue to look at it, but I'm satisfied and I'm ready to move forward.
Out of the, out of the, where this was coming from, parking study was done two years ago. The three-hour discussion was one that came up with council in the spring, and the council was interested in switching over to the, the four hours down to three hours and being consistent on everything but Jefferson Street. But asked for some input from this group. This, this group is suggesting that they think that you should wait on that and be patient. However, the council was interested in doing that switch. Do you want to move forward and make that switch or not?
I, I'd like to see us see parking lots alone, like I said.
This isn't parking lots.
And then, and then, three-hour side street change.
And the, the only reason for the, the only reason I would like to see a switch from the four to three is to try to encourage those employees, we have spots, those employees and to, to go lease a spot. Because at four hours, the, the fact of the matter is for most of, most employees downtown, they come in, they go to lunch, they come back, and their, four hours covers it. Three hours would encourage, a little bit different. I think the only other thing we could do that I would be interested in is the repeat offenders. We need to have a graduated scale for the repeat offenders because there are, there are some that they get a parking ticket daily and that's their parking plan, right?
Yep.
They get a parking ticket daily and that's their parking, that's how they're paying for their leased spot. And I think we need to have a, a graduated system for that.
I, I do like that, but I'm, I'm saying, I'm satisfied with, with, with staff. If, if they don't want to rush into it, then all right, you know? If, if they want to do it right away, then, then all right. We already have the understanding that we're eventually going to go to three hours. We already, we already covered that, so I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine if staff thinks it's best that we don't rush into it. Well, I trust staff on that, that's what I'm saying, I'm groovy. Where, where are you at?
Yeah, I, I am as well. I know, only because we asked, we have this committee, we all asked them what they thought, they're telling us, and I don't think it's right for us to say, well, we don't like what you just said, so we're going to do what we want anyway.
You kind of expressed a two-two split here.
Yep.
Linda isn't available. I don't know if anyone has gotten any impression from her on whether she would like to see this changed or not.
I've talked to Linda, but I, I think...
Last time we discussed it, she was for three hours.
I think, I think I'd rather wait to see if she's...
Would you like us to bring forward a resolution? Based off of this discussion, bring forward a resolution authorizing the change from the, to the three hours for those streets?
I would, and then we can vote on it next Friday, or next, next Monday.
It, it may not be next Monday, it may be the, it may be the meeting after that, that it comes.
Sure, that's fine.
Well, that, Jim, on that resolution, or so, or what, that's just going to be for the hour switch? It's not going to be for a fines or anything else? That's something we're still going to work on?
That'll be a separate discussion on it.
Okay.
Because I, I think what they need to kind of do is look at what other communities are doing for gradu, graduated fines and see...
Right, because we have a lot of repeat offenders that get tickets over and over, so that's going to discourage...
That's their lease plan.
It is, exactly, and it's the hopes to get them to go to parking lots.
It's pricey, but that's what they're doing. It'd be smarter to go lease a spot.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we vote on it.
Okay, Jim, you got that covered. Okay, number four is our K-9 program. Chief Kramer.
I've already been threatened back there to keep this short so we get out of here, but...
Who wasn't?
Who wasn't?
Nick?
Who wasn't?
We know who it was.
Annette ratted you out. I know it wasn't Chief Truxell.
No, no.
It might have been, but, um, a couple of weeks ago, or a few weeks ago, I came to you and, and talked to you and updated about Asta, our K-9, and we took her down to K-9 Working Dogs International in Florida to have her, number one, kennelled until we can get somebody trained to, I guess, be her handler. And he was also going to do some checking on her condition with her pancreas and, and trying to figure out if there's something else that they could do. He's, he called me about a week or so ago with a proposal. He said he's willing to purchase the dog back for a fee. Her health has improved, she's gained weight, so she's progressing along and, and would be able to come back and work. With that being said, she also had her, was going to have her fifth birthday here in August, so the, the viability of her working is probably to the age of seven. With that, also, the supplement that she was taking is two-hundred-and-forty dollars a month, somewhere around there. He looked for a cheaper supplement for us, and he said that about the cheapest he's going to get is, is a generic brand that's around two-hundred dollars. So, anyway, you cut the pie, it's between two-hundred and two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month additional expense to keep her on duty. The proposal he sent to me would give us a refund, or not a refund, but a exchange or warranty price for Asta. He also, by contract, when we bought her, has what's called the first right of refusal. With that, he would have to refuse to purchase her back in order for us as the city to sell her to someone else. So, with that being said, he's willing to purchase her back and whatever agreement he makes with, with someone else would be his agreement, not ours. So, with that price that he said, that, I want to back up just a minute, that the cost for training a new handler was around forty-eight-hundred dollars to train a new handler. That training is available October first through the eleventh onsite at his facility. And also, the original contract for her to be down there until October was about twenty-three-hundred dollars. With that being said, the agreement he has sent me to buy her back, that of course reduces the amount of kenneling that needs to be done, brings it down to about nine-hundred-and-fifty to a thousand dollars for that cost, which we've, would keep her there until the sale. The price of about forty-eight-hundred dollars for the training for the handler is still there, and then the cost to, to purchase a new dog with the rebate or the warranty would be about twenty-three, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. There's also a shipping charge on there of a thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars to get a, a new dog to the facility and for us to get a new dog between one and a half and two years old. With that being said, to get a younger dog with longer sustainability to work for the Burlington Police Department would cost us about ninety-three-hundred dollars. That's all in, all done with the training. We already have the vehicle, that equipment's there, so the cost to bring a new K-9 in would be about that nine, just a shade over ninety-three-hundred dollars.
What's the cost if we were to get someone trained and, and keep Asta?
The cost for that is just minus, well, we'd have to keep her there, so that cost would be the two-thousand-three-hundred-and-ten dollars for kennelling her and then the, about the forty-eight-hundred dollars, so you're talking a little over seventy-five-hundred dollars.
And the shipping charge, right?
There's no shipping charge for Asta. This would be for a new dog, the shipping charge.
So, you see, your cost is a, a couple of thousand dollars to get an extended three years.
For a newer, younger dog without the issues.
But, but what you're getting, so it's a, value-wise, going with a new dog with a new handler, having the, that dog available for the full five years is worth an awful lot more. However, when you, you originally did the program with Asta, you're looking at covering the majority of the, of the five-year cost for that dog with the funds that were donated. And this will go well beyond, you're, you're now committing yourself to funds that are beyond what was donated to cover this dog.
How much more?
Uh, over five years?
Yeah, the, the cost, this ninety-three-thirty-one will, will cost the city nothing. That's still from the donated funds out of the account that we have from when we purchased Asta or did the fundraising effort then. So, we still have the funds available for that. But that will be reduced down to, in that account, probably to sustain a one-year overtime rate for the handler. We have to pay the, the handler for taking care of the dog and the training away from work. We pay him eight hours overtime every two weeks, so sixteen hours a month, which amounts to, I think every six months, about five thousand, or somewhere around ten thousand dollars a year. There's sustainable funds in that account probably through, and I'm just estimating through October of next year, potentially, if, if this, if I agree to this deal in October of this year.
So, over the course of having that, that next dog, it would be about four years worth of...
Over time.
Maintenance of that.
Over time, maintenance.
And that's going to be forty-five thousand dollars over, for four years.
Yeah.
Still pretty cheap for an officer. I was going to say, I don't know how you can say no to that. I mean, to be able to extend the life of, or the, the working life of our K-9, that...
Yeah, of that program, yeah.
That's a no, that's a no-brainer.
Because if I kept Asta, then I would have to come to you for the cost in a, in a year or two to say, hey, you know, I want to purchase a new dog at full price, and it would probably be somewhere around, I'm going to guess, may, probably around twelve to fourteen thousand dollars, just for the dog.
Yeah.
Not, not, not accounting for the handler.
I mean, you've given us presentations that have shown us that, that Asta has done a remarkable job of taking drugs off the street and reinforcing your mission in law enforcement in our community. I don't know how we can not have a K-9 dog in the community, so. And to be able to extend the, the working life of, of, and getting a new dog, I think, is totally worth it.
I think the city overall is getting a pretty good deal when we talk about the funds that were raised for the start of this program through fundraising.
There you go, talk.
And then, we can, we can sustain this program for an additional five years at a cost very minimal to the city of an overtime rate. Of course, it'll show up in my line item in the budget every year, and it'll just earmark that ten or eleven thousand dollars for the K-9 that we'll have to budget for.
Maybe we can have a little, a little party for the, for the new dog and a little fundraiser to, to raise a little bit more money for, for the new dog as well.
You know, I'm going to say this, but there are, there is a, a great amount of support in this community for that K-9 program. I just don't talk a lot about it yet, but people do contact me regularly about supporting that program and, and enjoy it, so.
And that, like I said, in the end, it's, it's really cheap for an additional officer, the, the cost you're looking at there, so.
Right now, I...
I'm all for it.
I don't need the council's approval for the, going with this agreement because we have the donated funds that go through the foundation, so, but I just wanted to run it past you so you know where I'm thinking about going. I've talked to the foundation board and they also had the same sentiment that it's, it's a pretty good deal, so I'll probably just move forward with that. And just so you that you're aware, you know, come about this October of, of twenty, you know, that, that may be an expense with the overtime that's there. We plan to deplete those funds in the foundation before, you know, asking for that, so.
Okay.
Do you have an officer in mind or one that...
I got six or seven.
Right?
Yeah, that...
So, how's that going to, how's that going to work? Do you know yet how you're going to?
I would probably, well...
Make it just...
I'm, I'm going to do an interview process with them and, and look for the person that's most viable and has the best interest in it.
Very good. All right.
You guys good?
Sounds great.
Any other questions?
No.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, brings us to number five appointments. Who do we got, MPT?
It looks like we have, for the Animal Fearing Board, Belinda McCampbell has requested interest to be reappointed again to a new term. And then for the Historic Preservation Commission...
Judy Stevens, right?
Yes, Judy Stevens, who's expressed an additional term as well.
All right, we appreciate that.
Yes.
Let's, we've come to a close, everybody. Mr. Tisland, any closing remarks?
We're trying to finalize the Tiger Grant Public Input Sessions, looking at August thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, that our consultants will be here and having meetings over those three days. And we're, hopefully tomorrow, Wednesday, get out the information on that. But looking at the, just general public input meeting on Tuesday, August thirteenth at six o'clock here at City Hall, and having a stakeholder meeting on the riverfront that first day, and then the second day have stakeholder meetings for Jefferson and Main Street throughout the day, and then kind of day three is a wrap-up. They are looking to come back to council in early September to give a presentation on kind of their findings and get, move forward from that point, but I did want to let, let you know, Tuesday, August thirteenth, six would be the public input meeting here at City Hall, and there'll be stakeholder meetings throughout those three days, and we'll get the final schedule out once we get that nailed down. But again, looking at riverfront input on that thirteenth, and then the Jefferson and Main Street input on the fourteenth, and then kind of wrap up on the fifteenth.
All right. Counselor?
Just a good job by all on RagBri. It came out pretty, pretty well. It had its little bumps and, like everything does. I had one of the coolest moments happen in my life. That was, that was, which I told you about, that was really cool, so. Good job by the community and all the volunteers, once again.
I just want to thank CERT, and did you want to say something, Chief?
I have to give a shout-out to the major of the police department, Major Grimshaw.
See, I was getting ready to say something first, you just had to beat me up.
I did. I, initially, when they came to me, the, the partnership came to me and asked for someone to, to head that up, and from that part, I thought of him immediately. He has an enormous amount of contacts, organization skills, and just the effort he put into that this weekend is phenomenal. Along with him, Lieutenant Wayne Thompson was also instrumental in setting up the route and getting that coordinated with the help of Nick McGregor and his, his partners out there at the Streets Department. So it was a group effort, and I will, I just wanted to reiterate, because Major Grimshaw asked me that, you know, it went off pretty well, you know? It's just like the little things that, that could've been a little bit better, but no major incidents. Our night shift patrol guys had zero issues with, with the folks that were here in town visiting us, and, and there was a, a few little things that they were able to negotiate and make sure that they went off with, without anybody going to jail, so, but we expect that in our daily business, so. With that being said, it was a phenomenal event from their standpoint, too, and we had a lot of dedication down at our department, and like I said, along with Public Works and the people that Major Grimshaw had asked to help out and participate and volunteer, so a big shout-out to him.
Right on.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to reiterate that. I was getting ready to go there to staff, to the CERT team that, that helped direct traffic, to Nick McGregor and staff. It was, I just thought it was awesome. I, I thought every aspect of it was, I thought it turned out, everything that I could say, I thought it turned out great. And again, I'm sure there were some little hiccups, but even the hiccups got handled, so, good job, good job. And I, I just can't see how it could've gone any smoother for our first, for our first round at that, so, I just thought, I thought we shined. MPT?
I'm just sorry that I had to miss the, the great event. I was on my way back to Burlington on Saturday, so.
Welcome back to America.
Yeah, thank you. It didn't, it looked like nothing was here. All I noticed were the green directional arrows on the, on the road. So that's it, thank you.
And catch any porta-potties? Well, there are a few.
Oh, there's, there, yeah, that was, that was
There, there were a lot, there were a lot.
Counselor?
Good to be back in town.
Welcome back to America.
I, I went to some meetings on Thursday, had the opportunity to go to Washington, DC, to represent the city. Was invited out there by the National Association of Counties. Great lineup of speakers. Had an opportunity to listen to the Vice President, the Secretary of Labor, Secretary of the Interior, Director of DHS, Director of Homeland Security, and I was actually invited into the Oval Office to meet with the President, which was extremely humbling. And so, talked a lot about FEMA, and, and talked a lot about, a little bit about policy, and, and got a lot of great updates, so. There's a lot of things coming down the pipeline, as long as they get here, we should be good to go.
James?
So, three of us were out, out of country last week, but we were not together.
Right?
Nick, did you have anything?
Okay. Highway sixty-one, we'll be doing an open house for, DOT's doing an open house for Highway sixty-one. It's, you know, up in the, with the bypass, it's really about land out, out around in the Minneapolis area, but that's Wednesday, four-thirty to six-ish. I think that's at the middle school up there, though if you wanna get the exact location and I'm verified with me, I can get, find the email, because I haven't looked at that in two weeks. The only other, well, we've been working, we've continued to work with Dustin and VNK with the integrated plan for sewer separation work, and where we try to prioritize that with other sewer system needs. Just, we've had some, some general discussions, and we'll continue to have a little bit more specific discussions, and I would say that that's probably something that's gonna be another month or two before we really have a great definitive idea where we're headed with that, how well they take our approach. I think we'll, over the course of the next two weeks, we'll get a little bit better idea how accepting they are, and how much for modification or wanting to see.
Make a take to gray room in the bathroom. I don't know why they call it a powder room. The port building is all but cleaned up. There's some drywall that has to be stripped or replaced, but the Welcome Center people I've called and said that they can get back in there and start doing some things there. The Iowa store has been cleaned out. That, it was in a state, issues there. The auditorium has been started. Surf Pro, I think, started last Wednesday, and they got their big air scrubber in there, so they shouldn't take too long. They did find some asbestos that had been covered up from previous floodwork, so pretty well cleaned up. We, we hauled all that out to the landfill. I don't, I haven't seen a final bill for the materials hauled out there, but, otherwise, I don't know if there was something else.
Yeah, I talked with, with Surf Pro, and I know, and then also Brayden. They were hoping that they'd have a majority of their work done by the end of next week. Now, the asbestos is not something that they'd get done in that kinda timeframe. They have another room that may have asbestos in it.
The banquet room, and they haven't heard positive yet, whether or not it is or not.
So we may have some additional work there, but that's gonna, that's likely another to get with the notification process to DNR, and then getting a contractor in to do it, you're a, a good, you're more than a month out to getting that, I think, completely wrapped up. But we, it's looking like the auditorium itself not being done, but at least where some of the events that are scheduled in there this fall should be okay by mid, mid-September for some base events to be there.
You should be safe to go in there for them to be able to rehab that floor, you know, for our staff to go back in there and rehab the floor a little, enough to lay it